Moment of silence for the embassy of education in this province. Dr. Tate Mahue. May his soul rest in peace. Thank you very much. Okay, let me allow then the chief whip of Mangawu municipality, Honorable Nigelo, to welcome us officially before we proceed in Free State.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Members of parliament. There were Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Ba ahhi ba Mangawu. Kaka karezo. Re. Ke lala sefela kabuchutwanyani. Deputy Executive Mayor of Mangawu was supposed to come and welcome the committee. But unfortunately, due to some pressing matters, she could not come. This happens after our executive mayor resigned during this week. Now I had to come and stand for them in terms of welcoming this committee during this most important work. But once more. Ki libi se man tue arona es Mangawu to the family kapale la pa lanta te Dr. Tate Mahue. Ya re sile nka tsoha nyeto. Di horenza usenza tinla ka sheko hama ya wahai opumuleka hoto. Me seka mudimua kapalele la palahai. Ha holo lela palafreistata. Lelela palafrika borua kakakarezo hobane ine ili kan neti mosibeleziwa se chaba ya peta hizi. Katla sabue taba bale bahai rebone freistata itulele maye mona bele kadina kozosli. Me ki refela hoba ahui ba Mangawu. Letzatila ka sheko ki letzatila ueli ngurelele holo ha holo horona. Ile insipyo se ueli ngore mula oteo warona wa afrika borua uawhlalosa kamishlalema zati. Ore. Ronar rela se chaba reklamea refane katata iso hotse u ribatla muso ohonohu dipeta haza. Me dipeti iso zarona se u re kofana katsonale tzatila ka sheko. Eto oba dipeti iso se ueli ngore ditovitlafa zama emo atuto ya rona kahare ho afrika borua kakakarezo. It is indeed an honour and a pleasure to us as the community of Mangawu to be welcoming the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education in our shores. Especially, we need to thank the opportunity that the community is being afforded in terms of the bill that is going to be discussed. Because it shows that as the community, the government is not leading alone. We are all together in terms of making sure that the decisions that have been taken at the level of parliament are influenced by us. So I don't want to waste much of our time. The only thing that I want to say is that all of us who travelled all the way from Bloemfontein, from Tabaancho, in all the corners of Mangawu. You are welcomed in Botchabelo. Ward 34. And to all councillors of Mangawu who are here, you are also welcomed in terms of making sure that the contribution that will then be contributed to the committee will indeed assist the Department of Basic Education to ensure that it better the education of a child, of a South African child. In those few words, I want to say to the committee members through the Chairperson, you are most welcome in Botchabelo. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Nigelo. I received here a message that reads as follows. Please inform the Chair to tell the people to put phones on flight mode because they interfere with the streaming network. And I also in the same vein want to acknowledge the presence of the members of the legislature of the Free State. MPL Warren and MPL Peter Way. I thought that it is just human that we just clarify to yourselves that we proceed with the programme as much as it sounds. It might sound funny particularly to Africans. We lost the embassy of education early this morning. And I mean, that's the sector that is here. It's education and as Africans, when something like that particularly in that fashion, you would stop whatever you planned to do and try to move. But because we had plans and plans that forces us to proceed with the province, I mean with the programme, we will continue with the programme. We will continue as said as it is. We will continue with the programme because we couldn't also in the midst of everything confuse you more to say we are postponing and yet we are not even sure we postpone till when. And we want to say condolences to the Tate Mahue's family. We want to say condolences to the Department of Education in the Free State. It happened so very bad that we are also in this space. I'm sorry if we're in another provinces, it was not gonna hurt so deep. We want really to pass our condolences to the Free State government. Because I know embassy Tate Mahue started to serve education in particular from 2009. And he did well. He produced for your province. He produced the result for your province. He's a caterer. A caterer that would make sure would always comply to us when we ask him to come as the Portfolio Committee. And the days we were working during Covid, when we logged in, we would log in to him. He would be there before us. And he would keep quiet in a meeting. But at the end of the meeting, making sure that he gives direction. And if he had promised that there are issues, they would sort out in the province and come back, he would do that. I feel that generally if it was upon me, I wouldn't have continued. But we are continuing because in English, life goes on. I missed everything. We are continuing as said as we are. This is not just a leader that has passed on. This is a remarkable leader. And we want to say condolences to the community of Free State, but condolences to South Africa as a country because he had made his mark. Our purpose in life is to make sure that we make up, we make a mark in life. So when we die, people should make reflections, both positive and negative. But reflections that would tell a story about ourselves. I'm going to ask Honorable Litsia to proceed with the proceedings of today in Mangawu municipality. Skokelikate. Skokelikoban.
No, thank you very much, Chairperson. For the tribute to our fallen embassy. I think I'm first going to ask members to introduce themselves. We'll start here and on the other side. And then from there, we'll start with our meeting. I know we know why you are here, but we'll still briefly explain why you are here. We'll start here and you'll pass the mic when you're done.
Dumelang. Good afternoon. Huyedach. My name is Bafuse Yabo. I'm a member of the National Assembly of the Sixth Parliament. I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. I'm deployed to Parliament by the African National Congress and I am from Haute.
I must do it again. I thought dumelang community of Mangawu. Kalibizo ki vumile sefane ki Nigelo ki moleholtla kahare ho Mangawu metro. Ki alibo.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Renaylo Mashavela. Member of this committee. Deployed by EFF in Parliament. I'm from Limpopo. Thank you very much.
Dumelang bahai etu. Good day, everyone. My name is Nombu Sealot. Ladies and gentlemen. I am from the Northwest Province and I'm deployed by the African National Congress to the National Assembly and to serve in this Portfolio Committee of Basic Education. Thank you very much.
I'm going to win pingoke kaba the Chairperson of the committee.
Once more dumela. My name is Rony. My father's name is Muratela. Hailing down from Limpopo. Deployed in the Sixth Parliament, in the National Assembly by the African National Congress. And further deployed into this all-important committee on basic Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. I thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Suella Elvis, Member of Parliament and this Portfolio Committee. Thank you.
Huiyamidach, alimeense fani freistad. My name is Mari Sukas. I'm from the Western Cape. I am a member of this committee and I am sent to this committee to serve here by the African Christian Democratic Party, the ACDP. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Posetu Lindingosi Gangobo. I am deployed by Ingata Freedom Party, the IFP, to serve in Parliament. And I'm in this Portfolio Committee of Basic Education in the National Assembly. Thank you.
Dumelang, huiyamidach. Good afternoon, Botchabelo. Residents here. My name is Marina Fensal. I'm from the Eastern Cape. I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance and I serve on Basic Education as a member. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Huiyamidach dumelang molweni. My name is Bakoli Lenodada. I'm a Member of Parliament in the National Assembly, elected by the Democratic Alliance to serve on this Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Now let's clap for everyone. No, thank you. My name is Tebo Holitsia. A Member of Parliament, deployed by the African National Congress and I serve in this committee as well. The Chairperson of the committee has borrowed me small power to chair this session. This is how we're going to proceed. We're here to listen to your views. I'm sure you have read the proposed Bella Bill. This process, we're going throughout the country to listen to your views on what you think about the proposed bill. So we're going to ask you to raise your hand at the right time. We'll point at you. Then you'll come and sit here in the middle. Then go to the second round when those ones are done. When you speak, we want you to say your name in full. And also to say whether you support or you do not support the bill. And then you can then continue with your notes because I know some of you have got notes. Each member will be given three minutes to speak. You don't have to finish the whole three minutes. But if you decide that you are going to take the whole three minutes, when it ends, I'm going to ask you to stop immediately. Then you'll go sit down. Those of you who are shy, who don't want to speak, there's a table there of members of Parliament. You can just go there and submit your views, whether you support or do not support in writing. Now that we're done with that part, maybe let me also ask them, the members of the support staff from Parliament, to just stand up so that you also, they greet you and you also greet them. Stuff. Yeah, you can clap for them. We have also the team from the department head office and provincial office, they can just stand at the same time. I saw that DG is leading them. Yeah. Then maybe DG, there's also the Director General. Datemwele who's here as well, the Director General of the Department of Basic Education. We can just clap for him as well. DG greet them. There was a car which was not parked correctly outside. I think the registration number is FSP 969, so I asked them to go and identify what kind of a car. But I think it's parked in the wrong space. If you have a car with that registration number, can you please assist us by going to park it at the right time or the right space? So we're going to start by acknowledging those who want to speak. We'll start this side, this block. It will take about I'm sure it's 10 chairs there or more, I'm not sure now. One, two, three, they look like 10. So those who want to speak from this side, can I see you raising your hands? We'll start in this block or we can start. Let me see. My brother, you'll be first. When I point to you, please come here. Yeah, number one. Behind him, you'll be number two. The lady, the gentleman at the back, number three, the check shirt. My brother, you'll be number four. You can go there, number five. Let's sit there in the middle when we point you. My sister, you'll be number six, number seven. Both of you, six, seven. My brother, you'll be number eight. You'll be number nine and 10. We will come there at the back. Let's just finish. I'm going to time you. You will hear when your time is done. So you can start. Don't forget, you introduce yourself and then whether you support or do not support. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Tommy Lessing. I do not support the Bella Bill. I'm a proud grandfather and at my age, the legacy that we leave to our children, especially concerning their level of education and the future for them in South Africa is what I deem important to fight for. If accepted as law in its current form, the Bella Bill will be the most radical change in education law since the 1996 School Act. And it would put education in the control of the state. With its proven track record of poor performance and its poor ability to handle its current responsibility, I as a grandfather, I'm really concerned about the practical implementation of this bill and the doors that it will open to implement or to manipulate and even coerce all who dare to oppose it. As we do overcome clear. My first point I want to make is the quality of public school viability. The financial viability of quality public schools is dependent on them having parents who are all able to pay their fees. The Bella Bill would reduce government bodies' powers to review applicants' financial ability to pay. Particularly, they will not be allowed to ask for bank statements. If more non-payers are admitted or condemned, then fee-paying parents would have to pay more to cover for those who can't. While some imagine this will help equality, history has shown of the proportion of non-payers that dips beyond a certain fraction, the remaining paying parents have to pay more fees for less quality and then eventually they will all leave. Secondly, the choice of language. Most parents want English medium language. Currently, those wanting Afrikaans single medium have a choice of only about one in 20 schools. Currently, the SGBs influence language by setting policy, admissions choice, judgment area and teacher choice. If Bella is passed, the government can overrule the majority language choice and also stop the government bodies giving preference to Afrikaans children in admissions. And we have already seen the practical implementations in that, especially in Haute. Religious freedom, the bill would further route government bodies' power to determine religious ethos and policy of a school by allowing the government to choose teachers who might not be willing to uphold it. Many churches currently rent school buildings on Sundays and arrangement that brings school funds and help the community. But with the Bella Bill, a special permission will be needed from the member of the embassy, making this more difficult. With much existing correspondence, as it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Three minutes is done. Number two.
Good afternoon. My name is Ivan Yanka. I don't support the Bella Bill. I'm a qualified teacher. I'm well familiar with CAPS. It is a race to the finish line that is rushed and the most valuable things in life is often missed in this unnatural rush. That is the reason my kids cannot be forced to use an educational system that does not benefit them. I have come to appreciate the simplicity of teaching and how less is really more. I decided six years ago to home educate. It has been the best decision ever. Instead of rushing, we are now on a journey of a million discoveries that lead us along the path God has marked out for each of us. A different curriculum we follow is very hands-on and effective. I do not see any reason why I must ask for anyone's permission to invest all my love and time into my children and get to choose what I teach them because I have their best interest at heart. I get to adapt content according to each child's personality, pace and emotional needs. Therefore, I get to raise responsible and well-equipped citizens that serves the community. They grow vegetables, buy and sell things, making a difference in the South African economy. Also, they cook and do chores in and outside of the house. They have the freedom to play like I did when I was a kid, barefoot and muddy. They have time to identify plants, study bugs and cloud formations and learn themes that interest them in their season of growth. They have the freedom to love learning. If a grade R, for example, is forced to spend most of his daylight hours stuck in a curriculum with impractical outcomes, he is losing out on all of the above. The above develops their character and the result is healthy children that know what they want to become one day because they have had the opportunity now already to develop into it. These things kids will never be able to do if the Bella Bill, especially section 37, is enforced. Home education creates an environment which allows every student to succeed. We say no to section 37 of the Bella Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Johambra Torres. I'm a DI Ward councillor here in Mangawu. And we are talking on behalf of the schools of Mangawu. We are against this bill. The Bella Bill will remove the powers of school governing bodies, the SGBs, to make decisions about language and admission policies for their schools. The Bella Bill would be used to target mother tongue education, especially Afrikaans schools. Their constitution protects the right of the mother tongue education where this is a reasonable practice. Schools and communities must keep the power to decide what's best for their children. The needs of the schools is not politicians that must decide on it, but the parents that's childrens are in the schools. The head of department with this Bella Bill can dissolve the SGB and then there's only two weeks that a school have to appeal. The systematic issues that we have with this bill, the Bella Bill ignores the real issues in our schools. It has no regulations that will solve the following problems: dropouts, lack of resources regarding teachers, classrooms, schools, libraries, laboratories, ICT, infrastructure and more. Safe infrastructure. There are many schools that still have no, only pit toilets, mud classrooms, decimated buildings as best of roofs, no water, poor quality teachers. Teachers are not qualified to teach their subjects. So the Bella Bill will rob communities of their constitutional right to be involved and make decisions pertaining to their children's education and this must not be allowed. Thank you.
My name is Pakiso Makanya. Pakiso Makanya. I partially support the bill with the following points for consideration on my submission. On admission policy, the proposed bill, on admission, we are saying admission policy of all schools in section five should unequivocally applies to public and private school guided by the head of the department to determine language, policies and so forth. On section twenty, where functions of the SGBs are stipulated clearly, centralizing of procurement of stationery seeks to undermine the SGB's powers. That's why I said when I start, partially support the bill. Our SGBs cannot be ceremonial structures. On the very same section twenty of the South African Schools Act, we need a recomposition of SGB structures from the secondary provincial level so that their powers should be included as they are as per gazetted provincial department legislation to mediate or do oversight work through the department mandate. On the issue of functions of the SGBs in terms of fundraising, there's a burning issue of selling of alcohol in our schools. There are schools that are renting premises and alcohol have been sold there. There's been a burning debate throughout the social media in South Africa. All what we are saying is that only in the absence of learners, any occasion for school can be held, but in the absence of our learners, no harmful substance in the manner of alcohol must be consumed or sold in the school premises as there are heavens for educations. Thanks very much.
I am Mpu Chabedi. I fully support the bill. According to me, this bill is long overdue and I really want to take this opportunity to salute the African National Congress-led government to bring parliament to the people so that we can discuss this important bill. If there's a bill that the people of South Africa must support since the dawn of democracy, is this a bill? We need fundamental changes in the curriculum that we are implementing in our school for this country to develop, to move from a third world country to a first world country. We need to implement a proper curriculum in our school, a curriculum that will be answerable to the needs and challenges of the society. The current curriculum system that we are implementing in our school, it is producing job seekers instead of job creators. We have a high rate of unemployment today in this country because of the end results of the curriculum that we are implementing in our school. So it's about time that we change the curriculum that we implement in our school so that this country can develop and go forward so that the children of this country, they can be able to be job creators. But in general, I support the bill wholeheartedly. I thank you.
Thank you so much, my name is Thiriso Tinani. I'm from the Free State School Governance Institute. It's a new school governance body association formed according to section twenty of South African Schools Act. The old one, not the one that we are meeting today. We are not going to allow that. We support the bill and then we support that the HOD, the head of department in the provinces must rather stem or, you know, finalize the. Kind of what is the last word? The HOD must be consulted and he must make a final decision with regards to then I have seen what apartheid did to this country and we have seen, you know, cases of racism in many schools. I mean, all of us could see them on TV, on the news. That is the first one, we don't support that, it was submitted by third SASS. They went to parliament to talk to you as the portfolio committee and then we are not supporting it. The HOD must have the final say with regards to admission and language policy. Number two, with regards to alcohol. It must be very clear to say that alcohol will be allowed but in absence of the learners. And then finally, we wish that the bill can actually provide for application of PFMA and triple PFA because in the current form, the SASSA is silent regarding application of Public Finance Management Act and preferential procurement policy framework, which led to the high levels of fraud and corruption in schools because now each school must design their own procurement and financial management system. We thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mr. Thiriso Tinani. I support the bill wholeheartedly, especially regarding the language and language policy and admission policy. I support that the HOD should not consult anyone on the policy. Secondly, on the issue of alcohol, many schools have halls which can be used for fundraising purposes. So we submit that the halls may be used to sell alcohol but that should not be used in the presence of learners, thank you.
Thank you, next. Yeah, thank you. Translate.
My name is Pasaka Moya. I don't support the bill because of the following reasons. The section that says it's compulsory for learners to attend grade R, I feel that it is not fair as parents were not consulted about that. Parents were also not consulted about the termination of pregnancy. In terms of alcohol at schools, I feel that that is not, that doesn't sit well with me because alcohol, learners are not supposed to be exposed to alcohol. So I don't support the bill under those reasons, thank you.
Greetings, my name is Indemochen Chwani and I do not support the bill. ACDP rejects the Bala Bill and Particular Laws forty-one that amends section sixty-one of the South African School Act. This law allows the minister to make regulations concerning learner pregnancy. The DBE's policy on the prevention and management of learner pregnancy includes comprehensive sexuality education. The DBE has forced CSE and scripted lesson plans on the schools and they have started that, they have stated that the employer, it can force educators to teach CSE and other programs that are in conflict with the educators' consigns. These laws will give the minister the power to make the regulations to entrench the CSE program in schools. The regulations will make CSE law and the minister not only want the power to make regulations but also to punish educators, parents and SGB members who do not follow regulations. The second part of the laws forty-one will give the minister power to punish those who don't implement the regulations with fines, jails and jail sentences and up to six months. Educators and SGB will not have choice if they want to avoid jail. They will have to teach and implement whatever the minister makes subject to regulations. There is very little that will stop the minister soon, including the sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression and sex characteristics guidelines which the DBE is developing using money from the UN right now in these regulations. Children who want to undergo medical procedures to prevent puberty or change their agenda will have the right to decide to do so from twelve years of age and educators and SGB who do not enforce this policy could be punished. We need to stop this by now. The minister for making the regulations, parliament must keep these powers for itself and stop the minister. We cannot trust the government because they go back on their word all the time. We therefore reject the Bala Bill and the Particular Laws forty-one. We ask you to rather amend the bill to include freedom of consistent protection for educators and SGB members. Parents should also have freedom of consistence and be able to protect their children and have the right to opt out of their CSE classes. Comprehensive sexuality education cannot be separated from the values and belief system and parents, as it involves close hell belief, we therefore reject this bill, thank you.
I oppose a bill which is homeschooling and CSE. I oppose the bill and in particular clause thirty-seven that amends section fifty-one. This is a section on homeschooling. When the DBE imposed comprehensive sexuality education and scripted lessons plans of schools, DBE spokesperson Elijah Mlanga stated in the press that the only way parents could not opt out of the new CSE which is comprehensive sexuality education lessons is by sending their child to private school or homeschooling them. Parents then took children out of school to homeschooling them but now DBE, which is Department of Basic Education, wants to force the CAPS curriculum on homeschooling. Section fifty-one subsection two state that the home education program must cover their questions of content and skills at least comparable to CAPS which is Curriculum Assessment Policy Statement. And that learner must be assessed against the national curriculum statement. If a child does not do CSC, CSE, they cannot be evaluated against the CAPS curriculum. These clauses will mean that homeschoolers cannot protect their children from the state's CSE program. The Bala Bill is not being used to force learners to do CSE. I ask that this curriculum or these clauses be removed and that new clauses be added that protect a parent right to choose a curriculum of their choice and to have their children assessed against the curriculum they have chosen and not the CAPS curriculum. We are also opposed section fifty-one subsection sixteen which gives the minister power to make the regulation relation to the registration and administration of home education. This will allow her to make regulation and this will allow her to impose CSE on homeschooling and limit their rights of homeschoolers on their ways. Parliament must keep these powers for itself and not give the minister the power to make new regulations. Many small Christians and religious schools have been stated to allow learners to receive an education that is in agreement with their family's values. These small schools. Thank you, as an ACDP.
Dumela. I am Busisi Wemos Soqua by name and I want to believe that it doesn't have to take me three minutes to say no to this bill. We do not support this bill. And apart from the fact that it takes away the right for the SGB to participate in their children's educational grooming, the most scary part of it, it's that it is going to give a lot of power to the HOD. The power that might turn into dictatorship, so we do not allow this bill. It would have been better if the issues of concern, issues such as sexual abuse in school premises, issues such as high rate school dropping were also part of this bill. But now we are here on a different matter. Please let us try to prioritize things that are of serious concern to us, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Edwin Madiela. I am a DA councillor. I am a DA Consulate in Mangau Metropolitan Municipality. Chairperson, the government of the day has failed the South Africans in many instances. This community gathered here today is witness to how service delivery and infrastructure have collapsed in this country. Not only here in Botshabelo but in the entire country. Chairperson, if the government has a final say in the language and admission policies at schools, why do we have school governing bodies? Why do we say that our schools are public schools and not state schools? If the HOD is going to have a final say in these policies. Is the government saying SGBs are failing as organs of governance in schools? If not, why have their powers? Maybe, let us just say maybe, this is another ploy by the government to collapse our education system. There are so many systemic issues the government could have looked into for this bill. Like the school safety. Look at how many killings are happening right in the schoolyard. Safety of the schools should have been prioritized. Quality of teachers, dropout levels, all of those should have been prioritized in this bill. Why do we teach English second language in our black schools? Our learners compare nowhere near learners in other African countries in English speaking due to this second language teaching. Chairperson, this bill is a duck cloud. And you know what they say about the duck cloud in English. And therefore, it's a big no-no from the DA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now going to start to take another round. We'll start this side. Uh, number one. Yeah. You'll be number two. You can go. Yeah. Number three. Four. Five. Uh, six. One more. Uh, yeah. The one standing in the paper. Uh, you can go ahead, Madiela.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Paul Sour. I'm the elected Chairperson of SAU Free State. Uh, we do not, um, support the bill due to the following concerns that we have. Section five and six, where we have stated that the HOD has final authority regarding, uh, um, the admission and language policies of the admission policy. We think that it is a deliberate way of making sure that, um, schools are not fully utilized and therefore absconding their responsibility in regards to making sure that there is enough space. Number six, um, section six, the HOD may approve the language policy. The words may approve. We feel very strong that it is a veto power that is built in. Um, and therefore we do not like to have that. We have seen, um, in the past what this has given us. Um, we also have sufficient constitutional court cases that will, um, be used against these two amendments. We also look at section nine and ten of learner discipline. We agree with the principle relating to the prohibition of corporal punishment. But we are silent on the rights of teachers and the silent majority of pupils that are being misled by this. Section Eighteen A, the disclosure of financial statements to SGB members. We believe that will fall foul of the PPE Act. Section Twenty, unilateral utilization of school facilities. Again, we're taking away the powers of the SGB in regards with public schools and making it state schools. We feel that these powers will be abused. Section Twenty-One Three A, the compulsory centralized procurement. The centralized procurement of PPEs during the COVID-nineteen period graphically illustrates this danger of making sure that the SGBs cannot procure their own, um, uh, procurements. Acceptable amendments after refinement and adjustment, it may be possible to live with the other proposed amendments. Thank you, Chairperson.
I want to start by asking you a question. If you have something to give to your child, something that is okay or something that is great, what will you choose? Um, I represent almost two hundred and fifty home educating children. Um, I'm from the Free State Home Education Association. My name is Sylvie De Bruin. As home educators and parents, we ask for the freedom to choose the approach, the curriculum and method of assessment for our children. Not all children are the same and they need different approaches to learning to achieve their full potential. This is the soul and character of home education. Section Thirty-Seven of the bill will kill this if it is approved as it stands. We oppose it. We all want respect and we know that we are responsible for our actions. As home educating parents, we need to know that parliament in making legislation and the department in enforcing legislation respect parents' responsibility in education and the upbringing of their children. In return, we want to respect the rule of law and the role of the department in ensuring that all children have access to basic education. The Bella Bill does not promote this mutual respect. Neither will it promote the required responsibilities of the two parties. We estimate that the number of families home educating in the Free State has increased from one hundred in two thousand and seventeen to one thousand two hundred in twenty twenty-two. Not even the strict penalty for unregistered learners, a jail sentence of six months, has deterred parents in making a choice to provide a great education for their children. Unfair assessment requirements and forcing caps on children will deter parents from registering. This will make it impossible for the department to fulfill its mandate ensuring that all children receive quality basic education. Simplifying the registration process to be in essence a notification process will, um, make that more parents register their children for home education with the department. Um, and when the majority of learners in home education are registered, it will be easier for the department to identify those falling through the cracks and to provide support to others that, um, that struggle. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee. My name is Karita Fesser. I'm a legal officer at Fetsas and a resident of Bloemfontein. I would like to extend my condolences to the families and colleagues of the late MEC of Education Free State. My submission focuses on the powers of the school governing body, which directly and critically links to the governance of public schools. The education system envisioned by the South African Schools Act and White Paper One and Two is undoubtedly one of a partnership that remains central as a foundational concept. This was confirmed by our courts in the Armelue, Revonia and Valkor judgments. Furthermore, the South African Schools Act clearly sets out the roles and duties of each one of these partners. The committee submitted to parliament in a BLA update recently that the bill seeks to provide for system improvements in terms of admission of learners to public schools. I respectfully submit that the amendments are not mere system improvements. The amendments proposed in Sections Four subsection D and Five subsection C of the bill are not in line with the scheme of SASSA and unduly limits the SGB's ability to best serve their school and community. This is practically and administratively not in the best interest of our school. Schools, rather. The SGBs made up of parents, educators and the community, they are in the best position to determine language and admission policies. The SGB is knowledgeable about the area the school is situated in, the school's budget and the needs of the community. They are aware of important, relevant interconnected factors to plan and govern these policies. Moreover, the SGB's power to formulate these policies is not unfettered. I refer you to Sections Five subsection Five, Section Six subsection One and Section Fifty-Eight capital C of the Schools Act. This also ensures that the HOD and the MEC's oversight functions are exercised reasonably and proportionally. Additionally, the administrative burden it applies on the HOD will not improve governance and management in our provincial education departments nor in our schools. To conclude, I do not support the amendment which unduly extends the HOD's oversight functions on language and admission policies. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, my name, Dingu Vangelin Zetto. Working for the Free State Department of Education. Tasked with the responsibility of ensuring that SGB are capacitated, the management, newly appointed SMT members are capacitated. Let me start by referring to Section Sixteen of the South African Schools Act, just to correct the myth that this bill, the aim of the bill is to usurp the powers of the governing body. We need to go back is constituted. We talk of parents, we talk of educators, we talk of non educator co-opted members and RCLs in schools that cater for grade eight up to grade twelve. That is the SGB. But there is a misconception when we talk of SGB as if we are referring to one component which is the parents. There are functions of the SGB according to Section Twenty of the South African Schools Act to serve the best interest of the learner. One of the function amongst the many function of SGB is to formulate policies. These policies are formulated by the SGB. The principal is a member of SGB. Is there to advise if maybe other members are getting astray. The policy must be in line. Remember, the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa, which is Act One-O-eight of nineteen ninety-six. It is the supreme law of the country. All the policies, whether it's in admission, language, religious observance, must be in line with the constitution. Specifically, Chapter Two, that deals with the Bill of Rights. Now some of our schools, because I indicated earlier when I started that, some of our schools, they use admission policy in order to discriminate against learners. When you go through the policies, admission policy of some of the schools, they will talk of feeder zones. We do not have feeder zones here in the province. They talk of, eh, Christian character. South Africa is a secular state. Therefore, in application forms, you'll also find that you must indicate whether you belong to Muslim, Christianity and whatever. That will make you to be declined admission. That is why I say I fully support this amendment to the bill. The route that the policy follows from the SGB, it will go to the second manager at the district office. Remember, the principal is there to advise. From the second manager, it will go to the district director. From the district director, we talk of the DDG. We have also got legal services. Then from there, it will be, it will go to the head of department who is the final arbiter. Therefore, we cannot say this bill is aimed at usurping the powers of the SGB.
Thank you. The time is expired.
Honorable Chair, honorable members of the Portfolio Committee, thank you for this opportunity and my condolences to those of you who lost a friend and colleague this morning. My name is Anton Estraser and I reject the Bella Bill, in particular clause Thirty-Seven. About a year ago, we switched to educating our children at home. And after years of having our children in a, in a public school, we've become convinced that school and caps are not in their best interest. As a small example, we have seen wrongly spelled words marked correct. While the teacher took, rather took the time to complain about needness or whether the date should be written at the top of the page. Mistakes in textbooks went unchallenged by the teachers and had to be learned verbatim for tests. The Bella Bill now wants us to put the assessment of our children's progress back into the hands of such competent assessors. Teachers, the Department of Education and the Minister of Education are indeed experts in caps, but they are by their own admission not experts in home education and have no expert knowledge about my children which could enable them to make decisions in their best interests. We work with our children every single day, assessing, correcting and guiding them as necessary, as is our God-given responsibility, confirmed by our country's constitution. And the state will be interfering with our duty to act in the best interest of our children if this bill is passed as is. If we have to apply to register our children for home education and depend on government officials to decide whether this will be in the best interest of our children, we will be neglecting our parental duties. We know our children much better than any official and we should determine what is best for them. I thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable Chairperson. Uh, I would first like to applaud you for trying to set up regulation, but I do not agree with the Bella Bill as it is written right now. Uh, if anybody would have asked me five years ago what my opinion would have been, it would have been completely different to what I have standing here today. Um, I'm a proud homeschool father. I see in my two daughters the way they excel at everything they do. I see children working hard, working at their own pace, not being spoon-fed. I see critical thinkers, entrepreneurs. I see children dreaming and working hard at their future. Ladies and gentlemen of the panel, education is for everyone, but not everyone is the same. We have different cultures, religion and belief systems. And for this reason, I encourage you to set up clause Thirty-Seven in a way that allows all curriculum on all platforms in our education system. It is very important to understand that we cannot expect enforce everyone to do the only one curriculum. There are thousands of children with disabilities with their own personal struggles, difficult skill sets that we have to adapt to. There are also children that are far above their peers that have different ambitions and skill sets. Whether it be caps, American, Cambridge or any curriculum, it should be the family's choice to choose their future, as I think it is in the Children's Act. I believe that the Department of Education should have a database of registered learners, home and school. It is a department, every citizen and every... It is the department, every citizen and every parent's responsibility to ensure that all children get education. And this education does not abuse, neglect or let them fall through the cracks. It is all of our responsibility to keep our children safe, happy and educated. I do not believe that the government or any stranger knows what is best for my children and for their future. And for this reason, I believe that parents and children should have the right to choose their education style and curriculum. I propose that the Department of Education and the home education parents work hard together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm Kakisho Baurutzmo Salamadi. You know, I'm, all these issues, especially I'll confine myself to three aspects. The issue of language, admission and home-based, home education. You know, I'm dealing with this on a daily basis, confronted with parents regarding the very same issues. We help more than three thousand learners in terms of admissions. You know, it, it, this bill, as I see it, is addressing the very same day-to-day challenges that we have here regarding the very same issue of admissions. You know, for instance, in, in, in terms of language policy. There are schools where to engage with a school having empty classrooms for over three years for the school just to admit learners. Really, if we put the child at the center of this, the child based on the cause of the right of a learner to education, if we can put the child on the center, we realize that this is addressing the very same issues. Home-based, you know, home education, we, we, I think we must work together. But it must be regulated because daily children are coming from home base, coming to our system, saying they want to change. And schools don't want to accept those because it's not regulated, properly regulated. Therefore, it, it pains when a parent sitting in front of you at that time saying, I want to change. For, we had to close one school last year, especially an independent school. You can imagine the trauma to those children. Therefore, I'm saying, let us work together in terms of home base, but it must be regulated because the children that you see on a daily basis and the parents crying. You know, it pains. We can sit, discuss here, but the people implementing the law are the ones in the coalface who are faced with those parents on a daily basis. Especially, I fully support because it's addressing the very same challenge. The language policy, the language bill, admission and home education. Thank you very much.
Uh, before you proceed, I just want to make an apology and announce that there are about five members that need to catch a flight. Um, now because of the scarcity of the flights, um, back home. So we are releasing them. Um, as you see them moving, don't, um, wonder what is going on. Thank you very much. You can proceed.
Thank you very much, Chair and honorable members of Parliament. My name is Rainer Preturias. I am a ward councillor here in Mangum for Ward twenty. I am a, I, I am a parent as well. Um, I reject the bill in totality and I think the bill must go back to the drawing board from the onset. The power must remain with the people, with the parents and the community to, um, to assess the language policy and admission policy of the schools. The SGBs in my ward are doing a great, a great work to ensure that the schools are, are functional and doing, um, and delivering quality services and, and education. The bill attempts to centralize power with the HOD and we must, we must strongly reject this. The power must remain with the community, with the SGB and with the parents. We have seen what happens when power is centralized, um, too much. And then the, the, the power actually goes off, as we can see across the country. So we have to keep the power with the parents, with the community, um, and with the SGBs. There is much more things that the, that the department can look at to address, um, the failing education system. A recent study indicated that as much as eighty-two percent of grade four learners are unable to read and write with comprehension. Eighty-four percent of grade four pupils unable to write and read with comprehension. And what will happen if we centralize the power more with the HOD's ears in terms of the language policy? We will, we will definitely be seeing a move to, to get our children not studying in, in their mother tongue. And that, that lack of comprehension comes down to children not being able to study in their mother tongue. Whether that mother tongue is Afrikaans or that mother tongue is Isuzuulu, A to Z. Allow our children to, to study in their mother tongues so that they can better comprehend, um, especially on, 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 um, large school flack. And we will see the centralization of power moving to admission and language policy, um, to, to actually lead to, uh, a, a regression in children being able to comprehend what they are studying and that is our main problem. So I reject the, the bill in totality. It must go back to the drawing board. Uh, the short and the long is the power must remain with the community, with the parents and with the SGB. I thank you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Katley Ho. My second name is Fortune. My third name is Tegiso. I'm a member of the ANC in Mangawu, sub-region of Botshabelo, Ward twenty-seven. I'm here standing fully to support the Bala Bill, which seek, which seeks to enhance the organizational efficiency, organizational efficiency of the basic education system, to improve school governance, leadership and accountability, transforming, transforming education service and protecting vulnerable groups to ensure learner will be, eh, will well-being and access to learning. The bill seeks to improve SGB accountability. Through, through declaration, through, eh, through declaration, through loss for the enable, enable the head of departments to investigate the school financial records. The bill enhances the management of undocumented learners to ensure such learner assistent, especially for this requirement is critical also to protect learners. The bill empowers the head of departments for, for equitable access to schooling. And inclusion of diverse South African in school is critical for social transformation. The bill provides school to attend us is compulsory from grade R, which will improve learner preparation and resource support, grade R learners. Let's remember, the basic education is in the center of the education of the kids. So it is much important for this bill to be adopted so that the lives of the poor, the poorest will be looked at.